We'll call to order the regular meeting of the zoning commission for the town of Simsbury for July 20th. We have five of the six regular members here, so I point Michael Doyle for Murecki's spot. Approval of minutes to June 15th. I think we set a record for short meetings, so the minutes were equally short. So I didn't see anything there that was controversial. So we'll adopt the minutes as presented. First item on the agenda is repair of walkways at 507 Hot Metal Street. Cecil's map, G 13, block 103, lot 22, zone PO. Who knows what that is? Post office? I don't either. So is this the -- does anybody know anything about this?
South Street School.
Oh, okay.
The old south school.
All right. So this staff recommends consent approval of this. This is not controversial. Any questions, Ryan? So we'll consent to the approval of that. So item number five on our agenda is application 1520 of RSP Simsbury LLC owner Mark Lebetkin, applicant for a special exception pursuant to Article 10, Section H of the Town of Simsbury zoning regulations for a temporary liquor permit for a series of events on the property located at 10 Jim Gallagher Way. Mr. Lebetkin, how are you?
Nice to see you. Thank you for letting me come before you. Submitting my annual request again, this is fourth or fifth time now. Nothing's really changed. I filled out the forms. We're looking at 9/2615, 11/2815, 2616, and 5/1416. You may remember I did not follow through with the January one last year because it was just too darn cold. I'm hoping this year it'll be a little bit more amenable to having an outdoor snow venue that's not quite as cold. I got the staff report on Friday. I got the signatures I could, as requested. I have my form signed.
So I think the issues, just for us, Mark, are, you know, the rest of the tenants in the building been notified and they're okay with this?
I have the new tenant signed saying he approves. Dennis Jacob was available Friday afternoon. The rest of the tenants are not in at the moment, but they are all -- have signed it every year previously.
And I know a few years back, the tenant that was there had an issue, but that tenant's gone.
Right.
Yeah, okay. And the time of day and hours for this?
The event will commence probably around 3:00 and end around 10:00, but I will start setting up by 8:00 a.m. And we will finish cleaning up by 2:00 a.m. And all the tenants know that. That way, we alleviate any question when we're actually starting and ending.
And when will you stop serving liquor at night?
We usually stop at 10:00, but my liquor permit on a Saturday night is 2:00 a.m.
Indoors.
On the patio, too.
Yes. Well, he's agreed to finish cleaning up by 2:00, so.
I see. Okay. Fair enough. We don't have a late crowd, as you know.
It's a wild town, the city. It's hard to get people to stop partying. All right. Any questions for the applicant?
The one request I have is written on my request sheet, and I made it last year as well. And that is, I'm asking the zoning commission to find a way that I don't have to do this each year. It's a recurring item for me, and I hope to always do it because this town seems to really appreciate the extra efforts that we make to provide a positive environment. At the May event, we had three bands, one right after the other, all great. People seemed to love it, and it was well received, and people keep asking more for it.
We appreciate the request. We've actually had some discussions about other fundraising events that are annual. And I think as we look to revise the regulations, we may have provisions available that would be along the lines. We'll see.
Thank you.
So this is a public hearing. Any more questions from the commissioners? Is there anyone here that would like to speak to this application from the public? Seeing none, look for a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close.
A move by Mr. Post, seconded by Mr. Dave. And so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I'm going to turn in my original documents.
Please see Rachel for that.
Please note originals.
Thank you. Does somebody want to amend the agenda so we can deal with this item?
Move amend the agenda to the application 1520.
I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. So we have amended the agenda to consider application 1520 of RSP Simsbury LLC owner for a special permit pursuant to the application. Like the staff report highlighted just a few things that we have already discussed that the applicant will use the proper controls for dispensing liquor as he would in a normal course, be done by 2:00 a.m. All right. So we'll be looking for a motion.
Move approval of application 1520.
Subject to, or the list from Hyrum, or no?
None of these were, I think, rise to that level.
Do you?
Just maybe getting the final.
Signature.
Yeah, signatures.
We forgot on that newspaper, just.
Oh, all of them?
The new ones.
Okay.
The old ones have signed for three years in a row.
Okay.
They want to get those in when they do come back, just because that's what's in his note.
Okay.
Unagreable.
All right. So it's moved by -- someone move it? Kevin moved it.
I'll second.
So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approved. All right.
Appreciate.
Thank you.
Great.
All right. Next up, discussion of possible action on any agenda item besides application 1520. Discussion of possible action on release of declaration, covenants, and restrictions on Powder Forest Business Park.
Good evening. I'm Gus Jazmicki from Ensenbichard Realty. We have Andy DeFato, the president, here. So when the park was originally developed in '83, there's a declaration of restricted covenants, and that was to give the declarant and Ensenbichard Realty some additional level of approval over what goes on the sites. It was pretty common in the '60s, '70s, and '80s to add these because at the time, town zoning regulations and the staff and the boards and commissions were maybe not as robust as they were today, and generally developers had a little more control of what went on in the park. It gave the declarant rights to approve designs, changes in color, put easements on the 50-foot of the edge of the property, just to develop the whole property. You were supposed to, at some point, form an association. You could pass costs between the things. And it was more a forum for the business people to get together and maybe act as a group against things. The declaration has been revised a variety of times from '83. It was revised in '97, '00, '03, and '05. And the last -- the reason we're here tonight was because in '05, at Powder Forest Homes, when that was approved in '05, as part of the approval process, they were removed from the declaration of restricted covenants because they didn't really fit into the business part of the park. So they were removed from there. But as part of that approval, the zoning commission at the time thought that whenever changes were made to the declaration of restricted covenants, we had to come back to the zoning commission for their approval for any changes. Kind of unusual. We have these -- we actually just went through this in Avon, where in Avon Park North, we got rid of these declaration of restricted covenants. And the reason we're pursuing it today is title companies are a little -- they've tightened up their process going forward. And what that means is they start looking at things like this, and we've had some instances in the past where people are refinancing, and all of a sudden, the title company starts looking at this and says, hey, the declarant or the association has to approve, has to give you a certified letter that your building's approved, and you changed the color, and all these things, and all of a sudden, all this stuff has to happen immediately. So this -- the restricted covenants really are an extra layer of review that probably at this point, the Powder Forest is predominantly built out. There's -- we know generally where everything's going now, and you don't need a lot of this additional review because, you know, the town board and commission. So we're here to petition to remove these from the land records, and we have the power to do that as a declarant, but because of the '05 approval, we have to seek your approval to do that. And this is really, it's a technical matter to make it easier for title companies going forward, for people to get financing and things.
Okay.
The town really isn't releasing, I guess, any of their approval rights or anything. It's -- it was an added regulation they put on in '05.
Two questions.
The town attorney looked at it, and he was comfortable with it.
Are South Pond and Hazel Meadow Pond still there?
Hazel Meadow Pond is still there, yes.
Is South Pond there?
I.
That's kind of in the middle of -- is that Carson? Which one's up in the corner? Yeah, Carson.
Carson, why?
Yeah. Is it still there?
No.
I don't think so.
No pond in.
You see where it is? And I don't remember there being a pond in that development. That's why I'm asking, because we have rights to, according to the development rights, we have right, public right of way around it, and I don't know that it exists.
There is, it's a corner of.
Well, there's a low spot there. But I don't, I've never really seen water get there. I think it flows off of Bushy Hill Road. There's a low spot.
You have a conservation.
Yeah, there's a conservation easement across that area.
Because that was one of the declarations had a -- I forget what it was, seven acres or something. It's just the big one here.
If it's at the corner of Bushy Hill and Stratton Forest.
Yes.
Yeah, you've got a conservation easement on that. We can't build on it for sale. But I've never seen water there either.
Pond on the map.
Yeah, there's two. What happens to the dollars, the $1 each time these declarations were paid? Do we get them back?
Everything goes to the town. Yeah, it used to be a dollar.
I don't know if it's ever actually paid.
Costs the town $2 to process a dollar.
No.
Any other questions?
So Bob's just got a comment in here at the bottom. It says, the bottom of his, to receive adequate assurances that the buffer areas described in Section 4.02 are adequately preserved. Declaration is terminated. That's all covered in this.
Yeah, because what would happen is they get picked up by.
Our zoning regs.
What's the mechanism?
That defers it to the zoning regs.
Right.
What is the mechanism?
Well, it's technically, the zoning regulations are still there. This was like an extra layer.
Okay.
And we have site plan control anyway.
Right. We have site plan control, right.
On every development.
Right.
You know, the prime's recommendation to release that stuff?
Yeah.
A question, and maybe I just missed this. Is the association being dissolved?
It was never formed because we didn't get to the certain level.
Was we even maintaining the private recreational paths?
Typically, what we've done over the past is we've moved all the recreational paths out to the street so they're part of the sidewalk, so the property owner there has to only maintain the sidewalk. So that's how we've been able to do that. So it's a little more, it's easier for everyone to see and maintain.
It says here that you want to terminate the declaration, but still retain the rights to approve the plans for the remaining undeveloped parcels. What does that mean?
We still own several parcels, so we're still going to retain the right to approve the plans. So for instance, if we decide to sell a lot, we tell the people, hey, we want to know what you're doing on our land before we're going to sell you the lot. And we want to see, you know, that's going to fit in with the rest of our land. We don't want to just go, yeah, do whatever you want. I mean, when you own the surrounding land, you want to make sure it all works in harmony. So we, that's why we're retaining that right. But you'd never see it because if we made a deal with someone, we have to approve of their use and what their building's going to look like.
All right. Any other questions?
So this is an agenda item. So we can take action on it.
Right.
So I would be looking for a motion to release a declaration, covenants, and restrictions as applied for real application.
I'm supposed to recommend the same release to the board of selectmen?
Oh, that's a recommendation. Okay. So they will actually. Right, it's to staff.
Well, here's what I would say. It doesn't really have to go to the board of selectmen. The reason the town attorney asked us to send it to us because he was confused on another issue. He thought this was part of, it was an affordable housing thing. And what he looked at, so we sent the letter to Lisa, and then when the town attorney looked at it, he said, no, no, you don't have to do that. It's, this just has to go, get approved by the zoning commission.
He says we get certain rights, but you're saying we don't get any rights.
Well, you, the town doesn't, you still have all your rights of zoning and all the other.
No, but the declaration does not grant certain rights to the town in spite of what he says here.
Right.
Hyrum's noted here, says staff recommends, recommendations to release restrictions as requested from the zoning commission position, and to recommend the same release to the board of selectmen. So I would think that that's where it has to go.
Since they were all signed by the selectmen, not by the zoning commission.
Okay. Whatever the town attorney says.
All right. So I'll make that motion that we release the restrictions and recommend to the board of selectmen that they do this.
Second.
Ryan seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. So you've made a baby step forward.
Thank you.
Large, large baby step. And Rachel will coordinate getting that recommendation to them. All right. Now, while you're up there, Gus, you have also asked that we consider today an extension of our approval back two years ago to remove material from one of the lots in Powder Forest.
Correct.
And I guess we granted a two-year timeframe, and as I recall, I actually remember that meeting where we were concerned that you'd be running trucks in and out of there every 24 hours a day, taking the dirt out so fast. We didn't, no, we didn't really think you'd do that, but.
It's been going significantly slower than we envisioned.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just, it's a function of the economy. The other thing we could work with the town on is we kept a 50 or 70-foot strip of trees out along Route 10. So really, for the most part, people drive by on Route 10, and they really don't see the pit unless you get up Powder Forest Drive.
Right, yeah. So I know you've asked for a two-year extension. The two years went by fairly fast, but it's probably the right thing to do, one year at a time.
Okay.
All right.
It's fine, yeah.
I think that I'd be in favor of that.
Yeah, one year.
All right.
One year or two?
One. One. Why? Want to give him two?
Three total.
Yeah, I mean, I think what we're mostly concerned about is increasing the level of truck traffic during the process. And since it's been not noticeable so far.
Well, I, you know, I'll put this a different way. There's a parcel that you're hoping to develop as part of that area that's going to have some sort of planned area development.
Yep.
And so, and I understand that there's progress on other parcels associated with this, and I just think the granting of one-year extension is probably the right thing to do just for the flexibility of those projects.
I don't think it's a big deal.
It's fine with me.
Let's do one year and move on. Everybody in favor?
Rachel says.
There is a, I just was reading through the rights again on this, and the statement is that any permit shall expire for two years from the date of issuance unless renewed by the zoning commission. The zoning commission shall not renew or extend any permit unless the upper is able to show through the report of a certified engineer that the excavation already completed conforms with the plan of operations as approved. So maybe that is a condition of granting of an extension.
Okay. So the condition is that you demonstrate that you've operated the excavation as we had approved during the first two-year period. All right?
Okay.
So we'll grant one year with that restriction. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No one opposed.
Nobody opposed? Somebody had to have moved and seconded. Let's do this right. I moved it. David seconded. Okay. So that's approved. All right?
Okay. Thank you.
And then next is the proposed addition to Article 7, Section N, and revision to Article 4, Section B of the Town of Simsbury zoning regulations. And our goal tonight is to discuss this language change and set a public hearing for 9/21.
We want to do this.
That's it.
Oh, this is, this is relevant to that, correct?
Yeah.
The language change is relevant to the allowing medical practice in.
Oh.
Were you here for that?
No.
Okay. All right. Doctor.
Hello. Hyrum just told me to come here.
Okay.
Saturday, he emailed me and said, show up.
That's all I.
Yeah, so I wasn't really expecting a presentation, so, and I'm sorry, I've forgotten your last name. Stanislav Paul.
Paul is considering purchasing the Linden house and using it as for medical practice, surgery, plastic surgery, and similar activities, but it's owned residential. And we listened to his presentation. We're generally favorable towards doing that, and this is now a means to that end. It's, the Linden house is in an area where there are already one or two other businesses operating in houses. You're not materially altering the appearance or the use of the building because it has parking already. And so this was, language change was designed to allow in certain residential areas the use of these kind of medical practices.
Have you seen the text of this?
I have not seen it all. I asked Hyrum to send me, send me a copy of it, but I did not receive one.
There are some numbers in it that ought to be important for you to know.
One of the pieces in this is that no boarding of animals makes post-technical permits put together. There's no boarding of animals overnight. There have been some cases where medical and veterinary services are linked, and so it's the idea of preventing, that panels can be considered used in some, in residential areas, that boarding overnight may not be appropriate when we're talking about animals as officials.
So medical facility, medical office and surgical includes veterinaries?
It can. The case has been made in, in other towns.
Specialty surgical office. You know, it's wide open.
Well, yeah. Speaking of specialty.
And that's why there's the note in there about no boarding overnight of animals.
Well, that means that you could board them during the day, which, I don't know. I don't, I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want a veterinary hospital or place of business next to my house, okay? If it was a medical office, such as the one Paul's trying to get, I mean, that's, that's different. I look at that as.
So, you know, just to be clear, what we're doing is this still requires a special permit on a site-by-site location and has to satisfy special permit standards A through H. And the most important of those is whether it'd be detrimental to the neighborhood or not. So, you know, I think that, this is designed to give the board, the commission, the flexibility to look at a particular application in a particular location and say, you know, as in the case of the Linden house, this makes sense, whereas outpatient dog surgery in your neighborhood might not, and, or might, if.
My old house that's down the road, about two houses, has a big barn in the back, and they could easily do boarding without disturbing anybody. So, you know, I, so I think the flexibility would be good to have.
I would say we should note to self, note to all of us, that when we take up the regulations, that we, I think we certainly could make a distinction between veterinary and medical, but that's beyond the scope of this.
And if, I mean, we're just making, tonight, we're just proposing change, discussing proposed change. We're not voting on anything tonight on the Linden house. And if we did vote on the Linden house, or when we do, does that follow the owner or the property?
Paul, it's the property.
Property. Okay. So at some point, it could be medical use today, but if the change is made and the language isn't tight, it could be a veterinary hospital some other day.
But that, you know, would they have to come back if there was a change to veterinarian use?
That's a good question.
I think this, the permit, that's a question.
That's a good question.
That is a good question.
Where do we now allow veterinary offices?
Route 10.
Well, that is this. And I think Dr. Court's office is kind of a residential area as well.
But I also, there's a mobile veterinarian. You'll see that van driving around, and that drives into residential neighborhood and performs services at people's houses. So, you know, I mean, it's that quasi.
Dog grooming.
Yeah.
Dog sitting. All right. I think we're getting a little far up here.
I just think we should get that question answered, though.
We should, though. That is a good question. Whether, once the permit is issued, could it be used for?
Veterinarian.
We still have the proviso on no overnight boarding. But I think that we would have to consider that on each application when, when it came in.
I'd prefer a second, a separate section that looks at veterinarian, separate to this.
Excludes veterinarian from the.
Yeah. Yeah, or, yeah.
That's fine. Let's do that.
Let's make that work. We have another subsection that covers veterinarian services. Can we do that, Rachel?
Something like that, yeah. So this is where we don't have the benefit of knowing our regulations well enough to know where these definitions are. Can you find that, Rachel? We're watching the sausage made.
Where is your practice now, Navro?
It's on Navro. It's in the St. Francis Care building.
Oh, yeah.
Are these numbers, any issue for you?
No, they should be, they should be fine. They should be fine.
So will you be with St. Francis Care when you move to Simsbury?
Well, I'm not an employee. I just rent space from them. And so I have privileges in Bristol Hospital, St. Francis Hospital. So it's just purely a change in space. And I think when Dr. Singh was in my office, the population in my office quadrupled in town. I don't have that, it's not, it's not a high turnover type of practice.
This doesn't address the parking, because I thought there was more parking need in the regulations, and the practice required. This doesn't address it at all, about parking in a residential neighborhood. Do you know that one, Rachel?
We have a definition for a daycare, a pet daycare, just separate.
I think we would have been fine if they hadn't put in this prohibition of overnight boarding of animals.
We would have done it.
We wouldn't have said anything about it.
Yeah, it's something that Hyrum has seen in the past in other towns where a veterinarian can make the argument that they are providing medical services of an equivalent standard. So that's something we can check with the town attorney if there's, if we can exclude. Can they make a decision?
So, yeah, okay. This is our last meeting before our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is September 21st. And we're going to have a special meeting next Monday. And I guess at that point, we could take up this, finalize this. I think we're, I think we're fine with the concept here of what we're trying to do. But we need to resolve the issue of whether we want the definition of a medical facility to include veterinary practice or not. And the commission's feeling is that it should not.
Should exclude.
And so if we exclude that completely, then we would propose this language. It would therefore not be necessary to say no overnight boarding of animals because it would be surgery being performed on animals. If we make, if we can make those changes, then we will schedule a public hearing for the 21st.
Well, can't we change it in a public hearing? Can you change the text of the amendment?
If you make too much, if you materially change it, then you have to leave the public, you have to actually note it, renotice the public hearing. So, which you could do for the following meeting, which would then be till October. So, this is where we find, we really wouldn't have to make any change regarding veterinary unless someone came in with an application and wanted a text amendment to allow them in a residential area. So as long as we exclude veterinary now, then it should be set, I think. Now, if Irem were here, he would say the previous definition of medical facility was ambiguous as it relates to humans or animals. So what we're deleting is medical facility definition, which is any facility wherein medical treatment or diagnosis is rendered, including but not limited to outpatient services and diagnostic testing. It doesn't, it's not assertive or, doesn't include or exclude veterinary. And so what we're trying to do is allow for a definition that would allow, you know, the way to do this is to, is to take the last sentence out of the revised wording at the bottom and then just deal with this special permit up above.
Yeah, because veterinary hospitals and commercial panels are in special exceptions permitted in B2 vet business zones.
Okay, so there's always a provision for those.
Yeah, so B2 covers that.
That's in what zone? So what, yeah, so let's do this, Rachel. Let's change this language. Let's take out the last sentence in the definition of a medical facility. So we've, we've tightened the definition of a medical facility, but when it relates to the issue of getting a special permit up above, let's add a D, which says that, so the fourth standard would be this medical, medical facility, medical office and specialty surgical office shall be for treatment of humans only, not veterinary.
Or excludes veterinary services?
Yeah, excludes veterinary, yeah. Once you're treated elsewhere.
You could simply, in the revised wording, say, any facility wherein medical diagnosis and/or medical treatment and/or specialty surgical services to humans are provided.
The problem I have with that, without having gone back to see how we use the word medical facility in the entire regulations is that...
That, yeah, might be contradictory.
Yeah, because as, as Jerry just very quickly pointed out, there is a special exception for indifference of, so you can allow unintended consequences, so.
Would you go put four...
I think that makes it pretty ironclad, what you just said, if you have a D, excludes veterinary services.
Excludes veterinary services.
We're strictly talking about facilities and everything at this point.
Okay. So that, we're going to recommend that for the public hearing that will happen on September 21st. All right, and you're going to ask what the timeline for all of this is, right?
Since I'm a novice to this, yes.
Yeah. So we have public, so, well, the way this would normally, we would notice the public hearing for the 21st. We would have that public hearing. We would open it and probably close it that day. We could also make the zone change that day. You would then have to apply for the special permit and we could act upon that based on the new zone change. Either at that...
That requires a public hearing.
That would be 30 days from that point, right?
Yeah. So you're looking at October, probably.
Okay, I'm sorry. So on September 21st, you have the zoning meeting with the...
Just to approve the language that we had talked about tonight. And you could presumptively ask for a special permit. Again, I don't know the timeline here, but once we've changed the, the language, then you can apply for a special permit. That requires a public hearing.
Oh, that requires a public hearing, okay.
And then...
Probably like this one here tonight.
People have, I know TJ has come in with an application...
Do it all at once.
Do it all at once.
I think it's very, I would, I would certainly support that if there was no reason you couldn't otherwise. So we would do it all one night. We have a public hearing on, on the language change and we have a public hearing on your special permit and then we could close both of those and vote on it that night.
Okay.
We need 30 days' notice, right?
No, not 30 days, whatever a public hearing takes, 10 days' notice, right?
It's a 15, 10 to 15-day notice.
Oh, okay, okay.
He has to put the application in beforehand.
Yeah, they do that in August, right?
Yeah, but the town staff can do that.
Okay. How soon you looking to move?
No, I actually, I'm, I'm in no rush and I, I really want to make sure that everything's okay. Like, I'm going to go, I'm trying to arrange to meet with all the neighbors now, talk to them in advance to make sure, I don't want any bombs being dropped. So I'm going to try to meet with all of them now and see what, how they feel about the whole situation before we can get there.
Okay.
So...
So if Irem has any questions about what we talked about, have him give me a call. All right?
One other note, veterinary versus boarding, it could be, veterinary might be too specific in terms of animal, so just kind of thinking about...
That was covered in that special use to boarding.
Was it?
Yep. It's specific, it said separate boarding.
Barking.
Barking dogs.
Okay. We made progress tonight.
Thank you all very much, I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
That's all, okay.
So I can get a copy of that from Irem?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Anything else?
Thank you all very much.
All right, thank you, appreciate it. I think we're done.
Discussion of upcoming projects, which probably, well, Rachel will have the update.
Any updates on any of the big projects? How about the apartments at the CLP property?
These they are making progress. We had a reconstruction meeting, but they are moving forward.
The speed with which they're putting up the world's biggest gas station is a little startling, but, yeah, they're serious about it.
Well, they're banging away at the other building, too.
Yeah.
They chunked it off and...
I think at one point, we thought they were just going to do the gas station first, but it looks like they're serious.
They're going at all of it, which is great.
Yeah, so the, the big project, Greenberg's property is, I think would be the next one. Did the property transfer take place or do we know?
Yes, I believe.
Which one, CLP? It's for...
Well, it's a big for sale. No, the developer was actually buying that parcel, those parcels, I think, to build the apartments.
Separate from Greenberg, buying it from Greenberg.
Yes.
So I believe the subdivision has gone, has been processed and worked ourselves.
All right.
Move for your jury.
All in favor, say aye. A few extra minutes.